Father, we come to you and do the thank today. Thank you, Lord. We're about to bring some mercy. Thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and do some business. Help us have creative minds, help us have great diligence and interbuilding. It's all problems that need to be solved. We give you all glory, honor, and praise for the ability to do this in your name.
Take this opportunity to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Hard County Commission on May the seventh to order at this time. Just the agenda just a little bit as some of our attendees have some commitments elsewhere. And we'll call on Sheriff of Hard County Steve Dawson for his report.
Thanks, Commissioner. Part of the work by the ground pass for the past month has due to the toll buy, the one UPS highway intercept was netted eight ounces of methamphetamine with street value of twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars. Had three defendants tied up in last. And traffic stop, we've let over the grand can doing a couple cases. One traffic stop, heard first three, seven grand on methamphetamine. And also traffic stop, sending some informed mass form of carry out evidence under five ounces of methamphetamine with street value of about fourteen thousand dollars that were made some good hits this month. And part of our budget debt will still run away under budget because the guy's doing good, he's had no newborn. And make purchase of four thousand dollars through twelve new offices for our rifles. One we've been using on our rifles. The batteries don't last very long and kind of just bad thing to have to jump out. Party got to turn them on, turn them off. You need the right, we need it right now. These ones we upgraded to, bought twelve units of them. They got a battery like fifty thousand hours, you don't have to turn them off. Then you took the guy back and come on. But it needs to be fast, but their rifle. Check on part of the Mid State Motors in Somerville. I talked to one of their dealers last week. They got a bunch of trudges down there and soft rank. See what kind of secrets that got like the ones who live in five groups. Why we're not under any kind of commitment to send them by. We've been waiting over two and a half years for those parts. They've actually got them set up on, set them on the lot down Somerville. If they're equipped, they would want, we ordered one that we can trade them up right now. Be crazy if one of them sell, but let me build those parts there. It might be another year for this part to get these trees out off lock. And then I'm like, we're paying to leave and get them out. It's like the one we need to live probably. Take these up into that. I gave them that bank, find my information. But other than that, let's go ahead and question. That's all that we're working on. It's really busy. I don't hear Paul calling anymore. I'll go.
I see we've got a law enforcement grant for the resolution to the vests here in our father's. Our things approved today. Is that gonna get everything back up to end date?
Yeah, I think what we're rotating now, I think that'll get us back to get the old version. You know, feeling that day, I think we'll be all right on.
Any questions? Thank you, Sheriff.
On your call volume.
Yeah, Paul goes next. Uh, Paul, Director of Office of Homeland Security, now one dispatch, monthly corporate April. And her nine one one contractor has been having problems ahead on the training company to get the building stuff to the power site. The one I went to, she wanted fifty thousand dollars to do that. So she's found somebody else she thinks she will work with, uh, great account with the community. But we got a price this afternoon to deal up to the site plus the building and stuff.
Yes. That contractor has a time line, right? How does the time line just separate from the shop?
I think we have to, like, two years from the grant.
Two years?
Uh, I'll check on that to be sure. I've emailed T M O. I'll give them some additional information with the, with the tower as far as the environmental assessment that was done. That too gone to him, so the information they wanted on that. So get back to them and see where they're at on that. We've, you know, finally installed power phone into the dispatch center for replace party dispatch. Party dispatch is the new system, the lines back in two thousand or better. So a little bit better, plus we get all three far E M S as well. I'm going to say program itself. So I think that'll help once we get all that completed and stuff on that. We're in the process of trying to get somebody hard to do dispatcher at pitches. We're not coming in. The ones that are coming in don't be qualified, so it's a little hard if there are any more on that. So we're still trying on that. Call volume from March, April, we had a total powder, they called team in the dispatch center for nine one. Law enforcement had followed call department after report, they've made them three calls. Party County Sheriff called with two hundred and twenty. Morefield Police Department on it, one eighty-four, and what we don't think is that we have twenty-one. Actually, what's the name of the state that we're going to call during the call? P N S had following calls, West Party Enser was a hundred and two. We'll hit this over back to what we did a month before. H D E A had eighty-three and Warriors over two hundred and twenty-eight calls for the month. Fire Department calling, take the dollar card, party did six calls. The five Bakers had twenty-two calls, and more to the party, party did twenty-eight calls. We had sixteen calls when we were able to retrieve the corrupt, we're in motion, stuff, and stores and stuff. Um, often the management, there is still waiting on approval of the twenty twenty-two E M P G access. Been working on twenty twenty-three E M P G as soon as they release that, give it to go ahead to the app. They were getting caught up in another problem back behind. And that's part of the problem with O A C is trying to get through O A C and proofing stuff. We never got there, so. I'm still working with the state on approval of the S H S D grant for the radios and stuff. There's only increasing, I just sent them in, just the radios and stuff on that, the pricing and stuff. On that, the state reviews those now and everything that we serve standards pretty much. Within the office for new S H S grants for security protection for the support areas and equipment and stuff. On that for this year. Twenty twenty-four S P S grant for the open up food, but that we can get. And one thing, the four or five counties in the area, it brings to come up with a new police picture girl to replace one of the county sheriffs in that. I sent a four-year request to the, to the forty-three agents to obtain information from the fires. And I have recontacted them about that in my first, but they said I have to follow up with four-year requests. With your relationship stuff with all the dollars and the number of goings and stuff with that law school retard and stuff. The N A M S three hundred times about the center had about eighteen people, I think, attended that. That was through the part, how you talk, and I think eight of those people, I'd say those people are actually party county. County commissioner and probably, I think there's three from sheriff's office. And two for N A M S, and two for my office and that. And we need some of the directors in area pockets that did discuss replacement of the bus. I think county sheriffs had, if they use it for four or two weeks.
Question. Those are reasonable, right? Um, how many dispatch to power? Would be able to include medical fire and law enforcement to get, like, yeah. Can you talk, go a little deeper, like, what, how will that change? Because I know some things that came up in that work group were a little bit related to that, I think, you know. And you, you already put the memo out for something to do what they were asking to happen.
Yeah, one thing with, I put her question, said two more past towns. The power phone actually with priority dispatch, we have our system from the medical side. But we have to pay for each one of those items. But the power phone will get all the, if our call popped up, give them, give them, or pick the questions to ask about the power. Same way with law enforcement, where they do not have that right now. They have to go there. Hopefully, it'll help with the questions that they're going to be asked.
Pretty much the difference. Is there additional training required for that power?
They've had some that they've done in house, and then we put with the May of the twentieth. No, the May of the twentieth, they will begin to do, give it in the training. Money for Thursday, eleven. We heard a few calls last night, one across the road, saying they're forcing floodings, probably. Other than any houses, you know. I would say today, probably just maybe the water, cause there's a lot of, always have to do that stuff. I don't know, my radio gets something to do that. I have one point four. We've got about three.
Call came in now. You would like to set up that training thing on the, on the chain. Cause I didn't, you missed that. I didn't, through the one that sent that, because we had the memorial service for Terry Lock. I'm saying that that's why we weren't able to attend.
But then the E O P, that didn't even, this one?
Yes.
I just received this and a new change of stuff to that.
You did, cause then I'm all. Didn't have that. I didn't see a notification of that. I know some people that bought some parcels and I asked them, God, and he said, yeah, that's a great thing. I would think that as well, you know, for like housing. You know, people buy and they need entrances, you know. I'll tell you a lot about that. Yeah, they even said last night that he didn't have to be forty. Who's not ready? Yeah, pretty much.
Other questions for Paul or Matthew Paul? All righty, Michelle, I'd say, Wendy says you had another appointment to get to.
Yeah, and that's an opportunity. Um, we're, I was kind of convinced that it was required to present our annual report to the funding agencies. Where this could be, and I'm not happy, Trevor's a poor, very different person. But I emailed you all the copy of the charter report, so I'm just kind of having a hard time with it. We began twenty twenty-four with, um, working with the community and members of the work development. The teacher's plan for what we do. And the, um, uh, this plan relates to the advancement of our projects. So also trails, which you created some heritage trails. The mission we're focusing on extending the, the, extending the, we were ending up seeing the camp, the under marketing camp and stuff. That we're updating on the heritage site and building a new eagle altar. And then calling providing a pretty senior, senior, um, cattle guide. I thought that was enough to keep an important mission going this year. But in the last three years, I'm so much hopeful news. Since two thousand nineteen, the town and the C V D has been trying to get a contractor to build the two smaller additions. Um, to take the town to town, so this is the kind of good place I'm in. We all have provided funding to the town as to what it needs. But the C V D has, or was finally had a contractor, and absolutely expanded. With the, um, with that in place, we're beginning to develop the museum, which is funded by the command and council. And with any, uh, with using the personal store structure. With any class will start to, um, institute the location in those conditions, hopefully, that's all. As you know, the, the mountain life trail at Foster West Coast Park will be in construction, hopefully, also in fall. Because the Hard County, the Foster Trail Coalition has done more than three hundred thousand dollars recreational, um, trail program grant. It was through the support of, um, tradition that we were able to get the concept plan developed by the National Mountain Life Association. That plan has been along the way, we're getting approval of the, um, R T K grant, the character of that. The, um, I'm sorry. That is my, I forgot. We're, um, I probably didn't mind, I'm not gonna. We're, we're going to have to raise a little bit more money for, um, media equipment and that sort of thing. For the C V D, for F S Grant, um, for the cultural, and that, and to take care of that. And, um, so the task takes it through my reports this year. And I'm very happy that we're able to get the heat and help and, um, mountain trails from being, and hopefully being a reality now.
Yeah, that's, that's extremely exciting stuff. Um, the visitor center work will start in fall and the.
Yeah, the visitor center work should be finished by fall.
It should be finished by fall, okay.
And, and of course, I haven't, I haven't come back to the town without that yet. But that's my expectation. That's what I asked for, so we'll see if that happens.
Are you guys putting this, like, up on your social media?
Yes, that, that is, um, we put the information about the trail on there. We're waiting until we come to that, get something before we do that.
Cause that'd be something that we can, you know, share too. So it's very, it's a big deal. Those are big deals for that.
Yeah, and I'm, there, there, we, we worked hard to get these things to happen. And, um, written a lot of notes to make sure that it happens.
Yes, yes.
And, um, this one, I didn't mention this for the first time. They're going to, we're, we have a very, uh, freelance contractor to do the marketing and the, with the C V D. And, um, yeah, to me, after having the, now, I'm just gonna be down, we're building a farm right on. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you all very much.
Nathan, you wanna slip up here?
Hey, Mr. Assistant Director of the A S Florida Department of Public Health. Call for monthly updates, uh, last April. Their total expense, one hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars and two six cents. Total revenue from April, one hundred and three thousand, probably six dollars and two cents. Sixty-five thousand, that's usually the fee, and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, sixteen cents, on all services. Uh, twenty-three is extended from, uh, whatever. As far as the vehicles, everything's in service, nothing to report. Equipment, all equipment is in service, nothing to report, around the same. We did have a, a board pharmacy. This factory, a guy come by our site late last month. Couple things, you notice, you need more, like, clients like that, you need a couple things, probably need work on. If they were trying to do this, like, site inspection, they'd be having a client. Make a recommendation for identification. Most of the temperatures that regulate, like, stuff like twenty-six, seventy degrees, seventy-seven degrees. Stuff like that, as far as, um, how we track everything, everything's fine, we're taking a couple forms. Do a couple, one if you recommend it, or the official E B A comments. We're looking at the software, because we have an app that man, we're having a meeting with them Wednesday morning. That's an officer. See how we track our assets there, but then also just in our files, so, um, they can answer the structure. Everything from time we did to that. Um, the medical issue control, uh, we're gonna start keeping a day of all the temperatures in areas of medical issues to tour. Uh, we've built in other county agencies, and we offer some of the problems today is getting out of range. Most of the stuff, not so much during winter months, we keep it on for winter months. Too much fake, they're not, they're controlling. They're looking at a couple of institutions there. I think we're gonna be there this month, all day, to kind of get our attention to that. Part of A M S, um, there's update, there's balls coming out. Um, I know we have to go down, I think it's on the Martinsburg in June. They could hear the ball with that, uh, they're gonna have implementation dates for it for our first. These types of, who are these, like, higher, if they're high trained, that's actually more regular training, it's upkeep, um, on our protocols. We're working on the plan of salary missing. Currently, we're gathering the affidavits, the family submission, the board director, the pool this month. We will submit some commissions for a group up between meetings. High page we're using are based off their status in town in year twenty-three. Uh, instead of the past few years, we, I guess, like, seven, twenty-four. Uh, we're referring rates of park hours, uh, hour, per hour dollar amount. With the main fund teams, first, he didn't own all the time, please. We can just hang along some payout versus requesting, you know, the court, they call it, one, that, but in the third word. Um, this is a difference in the enhancement hours, more five, six, ten, ten, three. A couple of other things, I did submit a grant, um, last month with, um, the joint grant with Mineral County, all the, and Hard County, and then Hancher County, so we all work on the grant together. The blood supplement grant for, um, for, uh, Peter, which is a supplement for our girl A M S. It's based off, um, training, retention, education type stuff. Five-year cooperation, what they technically represent with a grant. We're working, if we get the grant, we'll be working with the community research department, pretty likely with their recommendations. How they listen to my experience and stuff like that. I think it's, it was like two hundred and three thousand for a year for five years. And then it's dead, we gave enough time, forgot we're gonna try to find that after five years as well, but we'll see. That one, I think throwing one to, um, this works, a couple million dollars every time. Pretty competitive. I need to worry about it as far as training, but in the past, I know we're still looking at grants for more radius. We need early up people. It looks like the salary enhancement dollars will be available for another year. Are you gonna continue with the same plan for along some payout? Yeah, probably, I'm gonna see that, by the way, I, it's the same providers can see that more of a perception, like, imagine they feel that, and you can write in there, or if it's a battery, or a quarter, they're creating a month. We're small, we can't track that way.
Think that'll help with some recruitment and retention?
I, I think it will. I think it will. Um, it's just retention for it, because then we're not looking so many, um, not moving to having the rise work. You know, the husband, time, dog, and all, again, why are those important times?
Nathan, um, the round table meeting, did you see, it's going, it's Wednesday.
This Wednesday, yeah.
Derek met me last night.
Yeah, cause I, I thought it was next, well, that's what I thought.
But I think it's gonna be this Wednesday. It seems like it. That's my, I don't know what Wednesday was said, did you hear?
I think they're gonna be there as well.
Yeah, so we're, we've been doing this for, speaking of her, for the month, where we're, um, we're doing a round table working meeting every month with all the, with every county agency. Just trying to, just trying to work on things. I think they're going pretty well. We just have, we just have to, you know, keep, keep moving forward on that. But I think that's a good thing that we have pulling there. I did want to say also that Derek and Nate then attended the M S A, Emergency Medical Services Advisor Council. And that's where the information on the new protocol calls, which those protocols have been, uh, the work on those have been several months in the making. Actually, I think it goes into the years. Um, but they're, they're gonna have a new protocol, and I think they're trying to make them more user friendly. That's a big idea behind the protocols, because they're several pages long. And, you know, we need to have, um, people who are out in the field be able to use them easily. But I know you guys looked through them and they seem, they seem.
Yeah, they kind of provide the structure that kind of, you see outside of the state, to be the, uh, the junior man, how the protocol themselves, the structure is laid out. Very integrated, it's very fluid, very efficient. When you look at it, it's very fluid, like, you're, we could be doing, we should be doing stuff like that. And in medications, they're gonna come out with, I mean, they're not that expensive. Like, they're, they may modulate with our, if it contains, if they are expensive, or, 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 they won't be used. I think they may be optional, or the equipment is required. I think they're like three hundred eighty-one.
Did you go through the new system, uh, I could work for a time, there a few months ago, and I, I don't know.
The pad system? Okay, yeah, yeah, we implement that. It's been a string, um, it's been, in fact, that, especially all the data we collect, it's transmitted directly to the state anyway. Now we've been documenting, you know, a hundred percent of our calls. Through that, for some, now the state has a, a better awareness of our actual call volume versus how we roll in the, for a bottom only document. It just takes the time, that's the facility for, for, I think that's, it's been documenting every call. They have a much better picture of what's actually happening.
It's kind of all that. Text the, guess where, text the, uh, margin where, uh, the person, like that.
Exactly. Everything's been fixed off, uh, call cats and everything, time stamp, and that's his time stamp, everything is automatic. It's very accurate. And that's, that's one of the reasons we wanted it for the after.
Uh, interesting article in the, on the West, Western Journal of News last evening. Uh, Putnam County, which, which, it's on the M S A board, and they have a pay valley. They are putting, well, it was related to a fire fee. In a, and then we're, uh, out for vote again this year. It failed in two thousand twenty-two, but they already are putting it back on the ballot. And evidently, um, they just talked about the cost of things. So, uh, they haven't changed their fee in Putnam County since either two thousand thirteen or two thousand fourteen, which were similar place. Ours in a few years were different than that, but, um, and you, they gave the example of a, of a, a fire truck. Not a ladder truck, it just, um, for the pandemic, like, um, two thousand twenty, it was four fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, that same fire truck today will be in the seventies, it'll be seven hundred and some thousand. And they talked about, like, it, there's a, it's an impossible, it's not possible to main, you know, maintain the same revenues for an agency and have these costs, like, so many counties around the state are dealing with issues where something has to give somewhere.
And everybody's dealing the same kind of pressure in terms of your whole, your legislation.
We need legislation.
And, and, and one more thing, we do have meetings at, uh, N C A, our W A D's on Thursday. And I kind of go over, um, how they building policy, part of the legislation was passed, the bar, of, of, that makes, and stuff like that. There were meetings on Thursday, do a train of all the riders, and then, um, I know she mentioned she has another meeting later in the month. They get a lot more clarification on their end. Uh, so hopefully, that's just top next month, on their information for our bill, for, uh, C A D, increase of revenue, bringing services and stuff like that.
That'll be good information.
Uh, so if you want to ask my question Thursday, or she's gonna back up, she's gonna be, I think, she has a meeting on the second, on the third of May. She got a lot more information, which she got, actually had her meeting with the legislation. Yeah, costs or someone else. The thing they ultimately bought last, uh, two years ago, cost two hundred eight thousand, and the same, we had quote now, it's three hundred twenty-eight thousand, the same, it's just, it's muted of everything.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, it's, uh, it's a real concern, it's cost. And I really want to commend you for pointing for that grant, and look one of these other grand lists, that's it. Cause I do think we will receive some, I mean, maybe we don't receive this, maybe we don't, but maybe we do, and, you know, there will be others, um, most certainly.
They, they were working with, um, Hampshire and Mineral, but the glass kind of grew, wasn't that an actual, uh, grant writer doing the fall's community, taking part in the grant, and hopefully it provides feedback to what we lacked in during the grant running. They're, they're supposed to give us some information, why it failed, or if it's, if it's, they're gonna provide some of the why, you know, for what's been, or what's been, or what's happened. And I think the AFG grant that went into back in March, or, if you remember, was, um, I think they should be awarded soon, uh, from July or August. And September is the, um, payment date for.
Yeah, we talked about these protocols and things like that, and the bottom line is improved patient care, and that's what it's all about. Administratively, it sounds like a bunch of molo jumpers, but the bottom line is improved patient care, and it's, it's good that these new protocols are being promoted by those practitioners in the field, because it makes your job a whole lot more effective, and it improves patient care, and that's the bottom line. And that's the, the other thing I wanted to ask, I guess, both Paul and Nathan, uh, you know, we've talked many months about the mutual aid arrangement, or some kind of agreement with Rockingham County. Uh, any update or status on that?
I, I saw, they, 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 you know, they emailed me back, the last thing he said to me was that it went to their county. And it's part of the operation, if we call, if we, if we just snatch rocking, you know, that is, we haven't had a call, but it's a down, and that way if they don't come, it depends one way, uh, for that. No one tires in that, um, January, so, they keep, or actually the patients from there, Winchester, away from their actual name hospital, uh, so it's, it's been more of a part of operations.
And, and I think, you know, going forward, and some of the conversations that we've had, uh, as commissioners, as highway gets built, and, uh, we wind up seeing more traffic, maybe mutual aid brings with Shenador County, uh, maybe another thing we need to explore, we're gonna talk to their commissioners about that, or supervisors, uh, when they have the opportunity to do that. Discuss other things that the highways have to do for us, or to us.
Right, right.
Yeah, 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 appreciate it. Is there more control room, you get, that clean that enough? Because when I called, it said, words on smoke coming.
We don't give you all this.
We, we always put that up, we put it up on the nine one one, so. My heartiest notification worked last night, someone told me that it was flood watch for the county. And we were, and we were about to, we were gonna, we were.
Was it specified for this area?
I got, I got, I didn't, this is, I talked to you, I asked you. Said, well, we wanted to get more views of that. If anybody's knocking, then they need to call the numbers that they need. Cause I, we're gonna, I've been getting them all along, but I didn't get that one. Uh, any other questions for Nathan? Uh, we also, I see here have a, uh, before us, uh, to reappoint Paul Lewis and Doug Kaufman to be Harti County Emergency Analyst Authority for a three year term. I'd entertain a motion without effect, um, then probably move in second meeting discussion. Any discussion, here we are, we're proceeding under all these preferences by saying aye, 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 three ayes, aye, 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 aye. Warrior Fitness.
Thank you. I'm, uh, Robert Oakley, I'm the pastor of Warrior Fitness, Matthew's charge, Queens your pastor, Party County's charge. Michael is here to represent the town council, bets you regrets, not to be here, but some training being offered, uh, for a particular brand. All they have to do is tend to train you to qualify, so that's where she is today. So I'm on the board of directors of Big Blue, thank you for your recent, uh, contribution to our organization, also treasurers of, I'm the one that got the check. And I'm here today as volunteer for the town, uh, sometimes I'm called the chairman of the fitness center, sometimes I'm called the president of Warrior Fitness. Uh, so I, I volunteer with the town, have about six years. Uh, in the MOU for the Oak, Oak, Oakley Ward Settlement, uh, section one, first responders, item two, they call for the provision of wellness and support services for first responders, and others who experience secondary trauma associated with Oakley Ward related emergency events. And so I looked at how many first responders there are in East Huron County, and, uh, by my count, there are about a hundred and six. Uh, twenty-eight with Cape Valley, uh, fifteen Warriors for Rescue Squad, thirty-nine with the, I didn't do it, called, called the Bay of Party County Rescue Squad, but I don't know the dog Party County, but it serves the unit at Baker. Uh, twenty with the Phaas Baker Fire Company, and four getting trips. Uh, there are probably more with the Phaas Baker, but that's the, uh, that's the quickest information I can get. But, uh, since becoming the chair of the fitness center six years ago, uh, we have upgraded to all commercial equipment within the process of that. Uh, we've added thirteen new or new to us pieces of equipment. We need about seven more to be fully, fully functional. So I am asking you to consider, uh, giving twenty-six thousand dollars to Warrior Fitness from the Oakley Ward money, because I have some equipment. Um, I can get it in savings of almost twelve thousand dollars, and in exchange, all first responders in East Party will be given a free membership for two years, a membership for themselves and their families, two years, although need to pay within ten dollars five feet. And I'm also the one to charge program, programming for the Rascal, but that's given us greater control and increased access to the facility. And, uh, they'll get, uh, two years, of course, subject to the same rules of any other, but we have, we have a good facility. We have a business, uh, heat stop man, we have no staff, uh, there's a personal trainer available, uh, but they, we, we like to say like six to ten. In reality, you come in anytime today, uh, I think everybody in Ward will know the outside door, to get in, but, uh, that is what I'm asking you.
With the, with the stall, the new keep traffic, do you actually?
Yes, sir. I can tell one time. I can tell one time they came in, I can tell if they tried to access an area they don't have authorization for. It's about, it's a nice system, have a little bit of a verb.
Is that where you can keep traffic actually?
Yeah. Their name, their name pops up, uh, when they were there.
I mean, it's kind of saying things out the ground.
The, uh, last, last year, um, Norback included a new system, uh, by one law.
Right there.
Yeah.
Can you give us about you, what was the, what was the number on that date you said, um, first responders in East Party County received a two year membership? And, um, you have a count on it, can you give us what's the value of that?
Um, I believe it would be about two hundred and sixty dollars per person.
So two sixty per person, okay.
With the, I think we give first responders the same rate as seniors, so it would be sixty thousand dollars for three months. And then two sixty for, oh wait, no, that would be for a banner, so that's different. That would be, uh, eighty dollars for three months, so that'd be forever forty dollars a year. So thirty-two thousand, I mean, going on a hundred, thirty-two thousand a year, a new year, sixty-four thousand dollars. And it's, it's a good.
Very creative solution that he just presented, because he was asking for twenty-six thousand, but the value is being received, that's, it's very creative, yeah.
And then, of course, you know, our other membership, that, uh, they put up our ads, so, we want to be supportive for first responders. I can speak to the town, but I can perceive that person a whole lot.
This would be done, because he's proposing it coming out of the Oakley Settlement. I, I, I believe he's given us chapter and verse as to the justification for, uh, for those funds, which we have to document. And, uh, I believe that chapter and verse would be, uh, the evidence made in this court, I have a position to allocate those funds in that, in that way. And is there any further discussion? And it's kind of appropriate, too, if this is public service appreciation, you know, at least public service recognition, which recognizes our firefighters, public employees and others. So it's kind of appropriate that we take this, uh, up at this time, and give them that. And we let it also, it was like Big Blue, and they, quite, for direct phone? Yes, direct, oh, yeah, absolutely. And this, we're a fitness man as well.
With the, with the charges and charges, I'm about to get a lot more people written, but.
Plus the other names, I think hard to name. But you have to. Yeah, I mean, he seems to be on top of it. You gotta go after, they got it. Any further questions? Except for just these tardies, huh? Cape Valley, Brooklyn, Will, Party County Emergency Analyst Authority, Phaas Baker, and deputies.
And I was scrambled yesterday to try to find out what's up.
You did, you did, yeah, you did. Any other questions, any further discussion? Any further discussion, here in under proceedings, always in favor, saying by saying aye, 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 three ayes and ayes, have a motion carries. And the checks can be made payable to. Town Ward. For, for the Warrior. All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, this will, yes, we're going for new.
Yeah, we're going for new.
What is it, I get it. I get. Well, I get seven pieces.
Peggy, I see a social media posting.
Yes.
Morning.
One would be the event that the schools had in tomorrow.
Launch pad. Okay, ribbon cutting. Well, well, then, but ribbon cuttings are one of them. And this is, uh, Public Service Week. No, that's more, would you say you weren't known by?
And I would put something up about the fourteenth election day, and I probably should put something up this week about, you know, the time's running out to do early voting.
We've got cornerstone laying, there's ceremony, cornerstone laying, the new health department. And then any of those deployment types that kind of spring the same.
It's, it's more stated, is that like, uh, how much I could work with the company, is it open to like? That in similar to the opportunity to help us with the launch, and then we can help watch.
So, I would be a night, I'd say around the one, something like, nine, four. Um, Jepson? No, there's no contact.
Oh, there is. Hopefully when this contact's over, we're a quarter inch thing. Oh, boy. Peggy, I think, uh, there's things, you, you, um, there's something that, that I think we should work on, is a, a goal for, like, like, end of this year, how many followers we want from that, like, for Facebook page. And then, like, the method we're going to use to get to that, um, you know, and I don't know if all of those methods would be free, like, you, you know, there are different methods you can get for free, there are others we, we would need to, you know, you need to, um, share, like, those posts and things like that, and so that, that will need to be thought through, when, you know, the budget, that will be, need to be thought through, but I think, like, we're having these monthly, we should be talking about that, because that gives us where we're going, that will give us where we're going, um, I, I think, I think that's one thing we need to work on. Like, just, just for example, I started, I didn't do it, I didn't go through the whole list yet, but I just started, you know, you can add, like, every single one of us can ask our friends like that, hey, it's not our face, our person, our person, you can do that, and that's free, and you, you're gonna get, you know, a lot from that. So just things like that, working on, I think would be good. Um, I also think, like, one good thing would, would, one thing that would be good as well is, um, I mean, county commission, or, I mean, there are individual commissioners, but there's also the county and, like, informative, um, press releases that we could all, we could be sharing related to certain things that are just, you know, the, the course that the county commission is going to follow. I think that would be really good, like, if there was a page written out, and, like, you could say you want to do one of those per month, and, like, the significance of that a month, like, um, well, for example, I'm not, this just wants to fix in my mind. um, well, for example, I'm not, this just wants to stick in my mind, you know, and then to clean up, that though, um, and that, there are many steps to that process, I mean, until, like, over a year actually, get that, even to that place. We could inform people about, you know, the steps of that process and just have like a page press release, and then it would be shareable. You know, it's something like, you know, like, for example, I don't have to create it individually, like, you do it, but like, you know, then we can share that out. And I think it would give people way more information, because they're not counting, one of the big things that are needed is more information for people. Okay, there are vacuums being created because of lack of information, and people will jump to their own conclusions about things, and that's never a good situation. And um, something like a press release, not saying every day, but certainly one, one per month would be a good start, and that would be a shareable press release.
Okay, what can we draw up on this?
Um, what would you, what, what would you guys say? Uh, you've got a number of things you could work on. Um, would the CDB to share is, be really good at? Because that's like, that's very positive. And I, you know, and, and maybe the CDB already has that written up, you know, sometimes it won't be quite happy you writing it up, it would just be like, I might not look at the CDB, you know, and realize it's there, but you could do that, and it's just like, like, for me, that's the first thing that pops to my mind, because it's very positive, and a lot of work was put into that and investment, you know, people's tax dollars, these tax dollars went into that, because we provided some funding for that residency. And we're, and yes, I mean, we, when the governor's office sent out, you do, you posted all that, that three hundred thousand, that came through the county commission, because we sponsored that, so that's a couple, that's a couple ideas.
What's the balance for mail-in mail for that? Tax statement? Is mailing that county does?
And they have these?
You cover it, you cover it, put the Facebook emblem on it. I mean, you're paying for the, the statement area and the brand and all that, you know, you can just figure it out there. You don't need it, you don't need it. Sorry.
I don't know, no, it's. He doesn't, he can get it made for free. I don't, we don't, I don't know if we have one yet. But you can also. I have to update, and I just want to create, you know, you can do things where you put your uh, your logo in the middle of it, and that's. Logo in the middle of it, QR code, and that looks.
Oh, what's the point of the commission for? Because that was the CDB.
Well, um, there's, oh, yeah, but it is now that I mentioned.
I, I know, but I would sell some of you guys, but you're off page.
Well, okay, this is specific to the commission we're having this, uh, the housing cash force.
Okay.
Housing cash force, and we already had one meeting, and I can send you some information on that, you know, because that is an initiative coming directly from the.
Yes, and I think that would solve it, yes, and we could do that.
Yes, yes, that, that would be it right there, but that's a deal, that's one of the biggest issues in this county, and, you know, as it is all over the nation. It's a huge deal, and, yeah, that one would be, I'd say, housing cash force. I think that one would be a little bit small, I think.
Remember, I'm eating, and I have children in pockets.
Well.
And we could, if we had one of you guys.
Absolutely, and if people of our house, they can have children in pockets, so it covers it, and like, it gets it, and it gets us there.
Yes, I'll do that, a house, which is a house with children in pockets.
That was great, yes, but last month, when that, children and puppies, that was your suggestion.
Everybody works on children and puppies.
Yeah, well, I was, I was talking to her about the sign that Charlie's seeing, I'm telling the children, we're giving them espresso and getting our.
Ah, there we go, there we go. Uh, also, let you know, the, uh, the notification that we do now have on PartyCounty.gov.
Really?
Yeah, and I'll work with Greg after the election and stuff is over, to see what steps he can take.
That's awesome, true, that's awesome, that'll be on our new website.
Yes, and I don't know if I can get PartyNet to accept it as the domain, because we're going to get it first, and possibly go to what we have, I don't know all that works, but we'll figure it out.
No, that's great, that's, good job.
That's all I have.
All right. Anything else to add?
All right.
I mean, you might, you know, start real here, and, and, and.
To be a gentleman, and then you could, as part of that, you could provide, um, you know, some information about the work of the county office, that would be so good.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Wendy Branson?
Yes, sir. Um, I found the resolution, excuse me, proclamation from the document.
Go ahead.
Proclamation, whereas men's health council is part of an ongoing international effort to educate men, boys, and their families about receiving regular and deep prevention, screenings, and living, and living healthier lifestyles, and whereas nationwide life expectancy for men averages for five years fewer than that of women, with men experiencing higher rates of health problems such as diabetes, PC cancer, heart disease, and brain卒动 mortality. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has been, has had a devastating impact on men's health in the United States, dropping men's life expectancy by two years. And whereas men's health insurance is a type of the public to encourage mental, physical health needs among men, and will also encourage fathers to be homeless, And whereas men's health month is a topic of public concern, encouraging men all to physically help women, helping men, and women who are encouraging fathers to be allies with their children, preventing the health screening, helping women to sleep, eating, and having, and our families. They're growing evidently to a size that is affecting families with added stress, anxiety, unemployment, unemployment, and mental stress in boys and men. And whereas, the Murphy's of Men's Health Month, with National Men's Health Week, a special awareness period passed one hundred and signed into law by President Brooke Williams on May thirty first nineteen ninety four. Now therefore, I, David J. Workman, President of the Party County Commission, and work on lots of different things, due back to the first one, June tenth to the sixteenth twenty twenty four, of Men's Health Week, and after the rest remaining, times of seven, eight, eleven, twelve, uh, or fourteen. Yeah, I'm gonna keep that in mind.
In the motion, yes, we do, our, our, uh, second, A, we have most, except resolution, uh, recognizing men's health month, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion, hearing numbers, see if there's always in favor saying if I'm saying aye, aye, three ayes, the ayes have it.
I wanna, um, jump to the resolution for the board of representatives, um, as what we were speaking to, um, Sheriff's Office, that he can, um, apply requirements through the Department of Justice for funding for the Board of Representatives, and I had a Board of Representatives for deputies, um, and I have a resolution, I'll read. Um, the resolution says to authorize certain block funds from the Patrick Lady and Department of Justice, whereas the Patrick Lady Board of Representatives partnership, needing to reimburse states, units of local government, and federally recognized Indian tribes, up to fifty percent of the cost of that armor vest. Whereas the Party County Commission is applying for funding for the BBC, for new body armor vests for our deputies. Whereas since nineteen ninety nine, more than thirteen thousand jurisdictions that participate in the BBC program, with a total of five hundred and seventy three million federal funds for the purchase of more than one type of body armor vests. Now therefore, be resolved at County Commission of Hardy County, Party County Commission of West Virginia, that the President is hereby authorized to execute, execute the set application, and that third document on the equivalent issue, and the needs and powers, and the contracts, and the, and the, and the, and the.
Um, I have a motion to give out that, that, you carry out that work.
I think we're properly moving, secondly, adopt the resolution for the Board of Representatives, pass the partnership, is there any further discussion?
Um, I do have a question on this, will, does the, um, does this partnership, is it the, uh, is there already a number coming from Sheriff's Department for how many vests this year?
So we have a list, I have a list, um, of the, that's soon to be expiring of all the vests, um, and what we typically do, JT and I, the chair, will look at the, which ones will be coming up, or the closest exploration date, and then we'll say that we need this many vests, um, in hopes that we get some of these, or, typically, we don't always get it, because it's a very big screen that a lot of people will talk for, but in the past, we, at least not now, so.
They don't, um, they don't have that, have an intention of including the security personnel?
I can't answer that for sure, but I don't, I don't think so, but that's something that we definitely need to do.
It's, uh, it's continuously being asked.
Yeah.
So.
And it's, I know it's been asked on your ring, it's also been, uh, one month.
Yeah, and it's, uh. We're all around this.
And it's the other thing that you were, that was brought, Martin, was, um, the reason of that, um, in that we're probably, uh.
Okay, yeah.
And most of our problems are, um, that is, are actually, here.
Gotcha, yeah, right, right.
Quick question, Wendy, is this the federal Department of Justice, the funded source?
Alright.
Well, we got a motion, we're in discussion, yeah, any other discuss, any other questions, hearing numbers, see if they vote all in favor, if I'm saying aye, aye, three ayes, the ayes have it.
And, um, there's a request from the California Department, they needed, um, Peggy Miller, her, um, board, she was available, um, for reelection or reappointment, excuse me, um, and she, um, has a group that she will serve again, her new term is on the, uh, first, June thirtieth, on the, um.
She was appointed, Phil, and inspired her.
She was, and that's the reason why she was.
They paid by Joe.
I think it was the Poppy, I think so.
They, we all. No, no.
Yeah, that's.
No, there, there are other, there are other board members that are more intimately associated with Solid Waste and, uh, that, that, I believe it transferred, uh, to, to those places, they didn't work together. But, no, I'm, I'm, I'm in motion, I'm, I'm in motion, uh, a second, uh, and probably move to second, Peggy Miller, too, Solid Waste, the Florida Board, any further discussion? Any further discussion, hearing numbers, two, votes in favor, six, five, seven, aye, aye, three ayes, the ayes have it.
I have a quote from Lea's Office Center for, um, Teresa DeVille, for a new chair, the chair that she had, um, did, did her, this, um, for, um, and Kevin, our salesman, grabbed it and he, uh, grabbed it, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh. Um, it's for the chair that she had, um, accused of chair of office, she said she might set here, that chair, of course, that's the chair of office, but she is, um, asking for the same type of chair, and offering to, um, to, um.
That's what, that's what that kind of, that's what they, that's probably not what they paid, but.
No, I think it was cheaper because it was, uh, cheaper, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think.
They were about, yeah, but, yeah, wow. Um, well, definitely does a good job, definitely a chair, come on, come on, maybe I'll say, oh, we, yeah, 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 absolutely. Um, I'll, I'll make a motion, I may refer to that request, but, uh, I think, probably moving to second, any further discussion?
Any further discussion, hearing numbers, see if there's always in favor, saying aye, aye, three ayes, the ayes have it, the chair.
The robotic scheme, change of law, so, so I will have anything, um, from, from, um, just to give you, I did send you all, email, um, earlier, and I don't know if you got to, to work at all, but, um, we didn't receive from state power, um. Our jail committee, that looks like this is mainly going up, um.
It'll be up to a hundred percent now.
Will be early.
It'll be to a hundred and twenty percent?
Yeah.
We are, okay.
Well, we need that, yeah, we did, I love. I'm in, and we dogged, like, why, it's just like a, a small forward, a third floor, how much would it be, with that hundred percent?
But, but, right, four, a hundred percent, so.
That's, that was one, one, six, yeah.
So there'll be, um, there's.
Maybe forty thousand, eight hundred, why you have, you're around forty thousand, so we'll, you have the, uh, jail, jail, for, for, that, April. I would normally get that number.
But, um, that email has been sent, it looks like that our over, for the M rate, is one of these sixty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents, um, during the month of May. Does that break down, does, like I said, in that letter as well?
So we're, uh, we're next, so basically, when we get to May, we know that, that May, Jan, what would be, the May, and May, will be higher rate.
Yeah, we're not very good.
I'm just laughing, yeah. That's, that's, maybe it's a hundred, fifty, a hundred and, yeah, and they, they're, they're, yeah, 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 yeah.
Her statement for, um, the month of, um, April, for our jail bill, is thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, ninety-two cents.
Thirty-four thousand, two sixty-seven, ninety-two, for the month of May.
Yes, it did go up. And just so that you guys know, we have our upcoming travel, all reservations, all registrations have been made, um, I did have a little bit of difficulty with the County Commission Association, um, the C P A W, there was, like, um, using my people, they use, think out as their, their, their policy, um, I've been learning that you cannot use your people, and pay them. So every time that, that's friends available, I would submit it to the department, and they answered, I have talked to different people, and we found out that we cannot use, and people, who, who take help, so she is going to come, that they're going to actually realize for those registrations. And that's pretty much all I have, except we have, just, I don't know, regarding the information that, um, that we had gotten, um, for some donation requests and other things, so, um, if you have any questions, we, we'll, we'll.
Yeah, armland preservation for the, uh, month is eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. Clark, you, I've got you on, for Mr., Miss Bill Ayers, I've got this document here somewhere, on his new, little, little paper for the new, finished for July, four, twenty twenty four.